All right, ready to roll? Time for me to go, I'm like, what do we wait for? Pan Am or I'm just waiting. Oh, sorry, we forgot. Get the show on the road here.
I know.
All right, good evening. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education and Public Administration conducting this conference business. This is not to be considered a public meeting. There is time for public participation during the meeting. I'm giving a agenda. I'm requesting superintendent, the personnel may receive a call for a person's responsibility to be able to participate. All right. Chair Albrecht.
There.
Chair Arnold. Sister Brudley here. Chair Drax here. Miss Changis here. Mr. Lundie. Swera here. Miss Rapperty. Watson. Uh, next on our agenda is meeting minutes. From April twenty nine, twenty twenty four.
Along with the Board of Education, approve the meeting minutes from April twenty nine, twenty twenty four.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the meeting minutes presented from April twenty nine, twenty twenty four. Say aye.
Aye.
Say opposed, say nay. Right, move on to the approval of the agenda for speaking board policy provides for present and school should prepare an agenda for all quarter meetings as directed by the President of the Board of Education.
I would move to amend the agenda to disable the solar walkway presentation to the next meeting. Just given the sheer policies of market.
Do you think it could motion for it?
That's my motion. So, I thought I said I.
I think we can move to approve the approval.
And then. Oh, I can't, okay, that's fine, I'll move the Board of Education. I'll move the agenda.
Prove with the amendment.
Okay, I'll move in the Board of Education, approve the agenda, approve the amendment to disable the school presentation of the solar walkway to the public.
I'll say. I'll say. It's not my good thing.
One side of the motion.
Uh, any discussion? All right. All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right. Prove with the amendment. So, we don't have any school presentation, move on to public presentation. Anyone? So, move on to administrative board of.
First, I want to thank Ms. Her service on the board. Still remember when you moved to Los Angeles?
Oh, actually, you remember.
Yeah, we were at. We were at. Yeah. You're just still okay.
You're little.
You're okay. You're just still okay. But, uh, you've done a great job. Where are you going next?
You're going to go about some. To find Twilight Works. I've had, yeah.
Come in, any fun day, first, right here.
Yeah. Any of them. I'll just hear anybody. Any other.
Thanks.
We have a little, uh. You have a lot. Token of our appreciation. Thank you, really appreciate it. We appreciate you all the time.
Yeah, you can take your name thing.
Oh, actually, yeah. Oh, wait, I know. Should have come in.
Yeah. Thank you, Robert. Please, uh.
And the doctor, the teacher. Yeah, there, the agenda's coming up, it's hopping past the reading, we're hoping it's a teacher, so she said, very cheer.
No, not really. Not really.
I was like, fine.
Actually, not that one, we've.
Speaking metaphor. Speaking metaphor. Good thing.
Thank you, everyone, I really appreciate it. It's, I think it's great. So, I decided for, you know, future teachers to take over and have an experience. So, thank you, everyone.
Good luck. All right, then I got a few things for you. They've said. Um, Title One, A funding, B historically received years ago, we used to receive over two thousand dollars. This year, it was about ninety thousand. And next year, we are on schedule to receive zero. Our, uh, it's not competitive, we're based, based on your census of properties in the district. And the, there are a couple of townships and islands. We drive the back of your census of property. Um, it's part of the island districts, it's East Grand Rabbit.
That food is only granted.
These are all Title One grants. Um, we're going to need to continue providing reading intervention, so I'll have to figure out how to utilize the grants. So, we're working. Oh, we're chasing grants on there. This one is, for me, look, I know that happens every year, but it's got a bunch of strings attached to it. The good news is we took the strings. And we was only ninety grand. They will come in, they seem to make the bottom money, but still eighty grand.
Yeah.
Almost a full. So, we will start planning in any case. Um, the dread watches. I think you have a copy here, these were mailed every house in the district. Um, they'll be mailing dread notes and.
Dread notes be next year, Karen.
Okay. And.
Yeah, dread, we all, um. Anyways, and, you know. What I see. Like the suns. Yeah. Very awesome. Very awesome.
Um, and then state budget. So, we're going to talk about it a little later. The, uh, the revenue estimating conference last week showed that revenue is a little down in the school rate, their experience. Overall, the general statistics of the schools. Um, there is talk of what the whole pepper rate, which is part of its. Any else? So, there's talk of doing something with the healthcare rate. Um, this was, we saw the government proposal for the primary school. She was saying that the pension system was overfunded. What it is, is there's a rate that we've been charged for years upfront on every salary to go into the healthcare trust. Well, that is actually overfunded by about six hundred million dollars. So, the thought is that they use the power differently. We're charged to, there's all the associations and including M E A, M A S A. All the embers are advocating to try to get that seven percent back to districts. I don't see all seven going back, but I can see a portion of it. So, that'll be positive in terms of our ability to function that same on retirement cost. Because right now, we're using a comparative factor, about forty seven percent on every dollar. Eight percentage for people who stay healthy. Pretty much. So, we'll see with that. Um, we'll be talking about it again later. That's like, really, what they. Management's night, right? Next week, senior day, Thursday. You need a Friday, you have, uh.
Yeah.
You know, we avoided a, I want to make our time to, we acquired a, uh. We, oh, I got two. We have, we had two issues, technological issues the last week. So, over the weekend, the storm on Friday night, Friday, uh, were, uh, fireable. So, the internet was down. Everything worked out at all, all weekend, trying to figure it out. Three o'clock this morning, they were able to get the old firewall working. Actually, it's. Then, last Tuesday?
Fifteen.
Wednesday, last Wednesday, our payroll didn't go through, along with a whole bunch of other businesses and companies. Um, something happened on the bank side of the software, it broke. The finance and business office team chased it down. They actually, uh, found it in the middle of the night and then, um, we're on it, we're the first ones to call. And they ended up getting it fixed, they get money into their company, they post these things, they start moving on anything there. Um, maybe, et cetera, they've been great partners. They have anybody that had a sufficient fund charge, they can free. It's, uh, they, they fixed it. It was only three quarters of a million dollars.
It's a big difference about teams. That's about ninety grand.
Yeah. It is saying.
All right. Well, I have some things for the board of members to update today in the listed list. Um, let's receive some certificates for our board members to see in honor of their achievements. So, Melanie, you got your certificate for number four.
Good.
Jennifer. You. That one, and every one. And. Daniel. And there's my practice for handing out. Very good, awesome job, guys, so take a lot of extra work on the dedication. So, we're always very happy when we speak toward training and our knowledge is the district's knowledge as well. Yeah. On to our. Debra.
I'm still not wearing some of your fun, it's okay. I can be my fun over top forever. No, no bad feelings, no bad feelings. Okay, so we'll be asking about things, the seniors, like, since that was on our day next week, which is really exciting. I'm excited to see how. I think it's just really romantic. And prom is this Friday, so that's really exciting. I have heard a bunch of good stuff. And, you know, everyone's just. So, it's really, it's a good time, it's a good time. And again, graduation's next week, so huge cross group up there praying. So, I can water on that stage. Not, but any good, but there, and the senior walk group is this Thursday, which is really fun. And I think it's going to be a little bit sad seeing all the younger kids, because it's, you know, when I was younger, that I think it'll be a really fun time to see my little sister, she's a first grader. So, you know, hopefully, no, no stress. And from club activities, uh, the Great School Club, finally, your senior flag at your function. So, hopefully, you can take it around the school somewhere, it's like, show other people what we're doing. Cool. And, um, I believe it was last week, we finally received out a physical. Reports, um, interview is a platform that N H S and other clubs, high school subtract really hours, uh, their service hours. And I think we actually, like, as a school, like, we've done over seven thousand houses. Um, and hopefully, you know. Higher, so it's mainly work that.
The three donations won.
Yeah, yeah, so. And a bunch of clubs, you know, seniors are really quite soon there doing their, like, anything with something. So, I, I'll tell everyone, we don't think it's happening tomorrow, I know that lots of students have their system. And, um, for like, specifically classes, uh, maybe even comments, my crowd, I have, are doing this really cool, like, distance plan for the students, so each, like, student gets to make their own business. And the proceeds of the meeting actually goes to a charity, a series, it says, a reason for the first instance. But I think it's really cool that, you know, as a, like, class, particularly like that. And I think it really shows up here for the students, with each student, such as their home, they, they're listening to. Um, and, you know, sports, I know that awesome, that's that, last week, and. So, I. Oh, yeah, Marty hit the one hundred and twelve straight, yeah, so very, very cool to. Well, Marty, have fun. But, yeah, those are.
All right. We'll move on to our consent items. Um. Kind of, uh, we often do consent items in fall. I'm with the Board of Education. I'll second. It's been moved and seconded. Um. Any discussion? It is. We're, you know, we're churning out some good teachers, that, that's great. All right, um, all those in favor of, uh, approving the consent items in fall? Say aye.
Aye.
Although, any opposed, say nay. All right, we'll move on to our action items. Our first is our trade policy, section four thousand, second reading. I'm with the Board of Education, approve theories, one thousand policy, let's, the fashion, exactly, summary, all three of them. Obstinate, please, right, or second.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion.
Oh, thanks for, uh.
Again, there's discussion. The action item, we'll, we'll call those. Chair Albrecht.
Hi.
Sister Brudley.
Aye.
Sister Drax. Uh, Miss Changis. Uh. Ms. Lundie.
Hi.
Swera.
Aye.
Moving on into our second action item is trade policy, section five thousand. Um, included in fact, at this evening, since I get summary, and theory five thousand policy, security by the quality committee on the sixth. I'll go through this, and if you have any questions. I'll move the Board of Education, approve theory five thousand, not review. This is a fashion, the summary on the impact of obstinate, please, can you work for first?
I'll second.
We moved and seconded. I'll go through the list of, uh, policies, and if you have any questions, help or comments on them, we will discuss. Five thousand four hundred and one, five hundred and one, parent guardian involvement. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm a long way. Thought that was three. No, let's just skip all those. All right, five one oh one, student expression. Five one oh two, markers. Five one oh three, certification. Five one oh four, age majority. Five one oh five, collaboration with outside. Five one oh six, transgender students. Five two zero one, investigations, arrests, and other law enforcement contact. Five two oh two, unlawful discrimination, harassment, evaluation of young students. Five two oh three, casing. Five two oh four, student appearance and dress code. Five two oh five, student handbooks. Five two oh six, student discipline. Five two oh six, aid process. Five two oh six, B, students' disabilities. Five two oh six, C, reinstatement following expulsion. Five two zero six, D, enrollment following misconduct at another public or non-public school. Five two oh six, E, suspension from class subject or activity by teacher. Five two zero six, E. Five two oh eight, student susceptible use in internet safety policy. Five two zero nine, student use of cell phone and electronic communication prices. Five two one zero, G P S tracking device and audio surveillance capabilities. Five two one one, aversion to use of seclusion and restraint. Five two one two, register substance offenders. Five two one, free personal protection orders against students. Five three oh one, compulsory attendance, absenteeism, and intruency. Five three oh two, involvement, figuring. Five three oh three, student enrollment and withdrawal. Five three oh four, non-public school students' current time attendance. Five three oh five, schools in place. Five three oh six, foreign students. Five three oh seven, homeless students. Five three oh eight, protection of pupil rights. Five three oh nine, student records of their refrain. See, I just started. Five four oh one, parent guardians involved in education.
Yes. All right.
Five four oh two, communication with parents and guardians. Five four oh three, rights of non-custodial parents' guardians. Five four oh four, free textbooks, materials, charging of fees and fines. Five four oh five, Title One, uh, parent and family engagement policy. Five four oh six, Title One funds.
I mean, that.
Right. Five four oh seven, instructional program and curriculum developed.
Yes. Um. She will comment on. Or C, like a life. I don't really. Don't, or just have the person who's intended, in soul, person, especially with previous harsher policy, broad policy, that does excel. So, I would like to see, possible, step two, give me, step one, I think, just. Principal, with the, they have a level, person, they have lots of super talent. Reasonably good superintendent. Good points. Yeah, I would like to see. So, just small committees made up.
So, I've got, basically, I don't.
That's a clarifying question, materials that end up in libraries? I must, I guess I was under the assumption that the principal would be vetting that list, or who?
Usually.
He is not. So theoretically, if parents had a question, they could talk to the chairman first.
Yeah, because. Now, we're not, for a side, we don't. Really don't, and I'd hate to see. Oh. It's, I'll, I get that, I understand. Sue.
Well, you see, the, the two granders, the superintendent.
One. I've been last. And now. Yeah. I'd like to see. Those small committees or just person?
Do you prefer that instead of, uh, we can make, uh, many stipulations for plus thresholds, including administrators and students members to make established? To, shall be established, or you want that more, I'll just submit, because there is a. Here, we're seeing. That does not go, dated meetings.
And then, that was for, I forgot that. The instruction, instruction material now, so I like that wording there, do that wording. Something. Right, right, I understand.
About fifty four oh nine, academic programs. Fifty four ten, commencement, education ceremony. Fifty four elevens, to promotion retention, please. Fifty four fifteen, summer school. Fifty four sixteen, home bad and possible lives in the future. Fifty four seventeen, home. Fifty four eighteen, grades. Fifty four nineteen, reading, assessments, marching, intervention, retention. Fifty four twenty, sex education. Can we mention about that? So, we were reaching options, we chose option two. Yeah, I wanted to. Like, name both.
If we, says that we look about the, um. You'll have a public hearing of this to, to public, so parents will be notified and should be aware of. I already won that, I would choose to.
We just did this, pause.
We didn't bring for this to. Yeah. I just know that there's, there's some parents that say they're not being notified, I just wanted to get clear that we are, we're. Thank you.
Fifty four twenty one, workforce learning experience. Fifty five zero two, student government. Fifty five zero three, bulletin boards and other student postings. Fifty five oh four, school sponsored publications and productions. Fifty five zero six, field trips. Fifty five oh seven, extracurricular activities. Fifty five oh eight, extracurricular and athletic trips. Fifty five ten, student initiated non-curricular clubs. Fifty five eleven, secret organizations. Fifty six oh one, special education. Fifty six oh two, independent education evaluation. Fifty six oh three, instruction five oh four. Fifty six oh four, student assistance process. Fifty seven oh one, child abuse and neglect. Fifty seven oh two, student illness and injury. Fifty seven oh three, medications. Fifty seven oh four, student insurance. Fifty seven oh five, emergency and less, lack of. Fifty seven oh six, opioid, opioid antagonists. Uh, fifty seven oh six, sorry, fifty seven oh seven, school wellness policy. Fifty seven oh eight, unit resuscitate orders. Fifty seven oh nine, lice, nits, and bed bugs. Fifty seven ten, suicide prevention. Fifty seven eleven, brother training. Fifty seven twelve, impression awareness. Fifty seven thirteen, immunizations. Fifty eight oh one, closed campus or intentionally left blank. That's okay. Fifty eight oh two, student transportation. Fifty eight oh three, student driving and parking. Fifty eight oh four, work permits. Fifty eight oh five, student audio and video recording. Fifty eight oh six, reporting of district meetings. Fifty eight oh seven. Flags displayed and flagging.
Same, what if everything is?
It's because this is not such a long time, it's the first time that it's. Play, let the policy. I'll be off, I was trying to. And background. I know, because I know, but still, obviously, sorry. So, this is, this is applicable to all meetings, right? I don't have a, it'll be a lot of, for, yeah, district.
Correct. Without, yeah. Both of them exist, of course.
So, this is, A, specifically, I. So, I'm just admitting a bunch of comments that.
There's power to it. So there is an emotion, what is emotion on? It will discuss for first reading. We'll go to our. Really?
I, I. I. Three, W I S D, special education. For the W I S B board post place the special education village renewal on the November twenty twenty four ballot. They need a resolution for each school, each local school, the school board supporting the renewal. The village renewal language will define two previous special education villages that both expired in June twenty twenty five into one combined village renewal. The village renewal will be for twelve years and will generate approximately fifty one million dollars a year for special education services to students in their. Because it is a renewal, there is no charge. Because it is a renewal, there is no charge to the current property tax rate. Extra community schools will lose approximately three million ninety seven thousand five hundred seventy four dollars if this renewal is not passed, which is.
I look at the Board of Education, improve the tax resolution. W I S D plays a special education. Two thousand twenty four. We've been moved in second with any discussion.
Yeah. Okay. But the question, yeah, I didn't say the question, I didn't, but, uh. The question is, they came up on their, a new thing that, what if they, or any school. It's not. Is, uh, the very. That will back up, can't, but. We just to watch.
Now, the, so you're asking if the district doesn't.
Well, no, we speak, we don't watch my coming.
So they want school halls.
What's, what's not proved, but.
That's a great question. I think everyone has to, but can fight the authority. I'm sure. And I don't know.
That's what I said, but must be all.
I don't know why you. No, I have, yeah. And I remember. Yeah, they could be out of twenty four million dollars. Those back here, listen out. I'm confident. Yeah. This is.
Let's share the files.
Other stuff.
I, and it's. I. London. Vera, I. Hi. Next is W I S D budget. Our packet includes the twenty twenty four. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five proposed budget documents from the W I S D and its sample resolution. These were discussed by the board on April twenty ninth, twenty twenty four. The summary presentation was available. Or is available. The board must adopt a resolution of support or indicate specific recommendations for changes before June first twenty four.
I'll move the Board of Education approved the tax resolution in support of the W I S D twenty twenty four.
I'll second. It's been moved in secondly, they need discussion. It's up to the. We'll, we'll call it. Okay. Uh, Mr. London. Vera.
I.
Really?
I.
Vera.
I. Administrative salary recommendation. It's time to open for salary and level placements for administrative staff for the next school year. Our packet includes a memo from Supreme Christmas, recommending approval for the attached salary for level.
I'll move the Board of Education approved extension dependence.
No, sorry, that's the other recommendation.
Oh. Sorry. I'll move it to the Board of Education. I'll second. It's been moved in secondly. All those in favor? Sorry, we have to discuss anybody, yeah.
Um, have any of these been moved off? Uh, that's my first question.
They go up on, so the two people that are going to see the. Think here, well, it's the N P.
So.
Okay.
Brooks did a looped up a stop.
Jesus. Right, so Brooke went down and Katie. That's kind of.
The other stuff. Roll call vote. I've got a question. We want the. Vera.
I.
Sir Aubrey. Really?
I.
Vera.
I. Number six on action items, the last one, the superintendent contract update. Our packet includes an executive summary regarding the extension of an amendment to Dr. Timis' contract. Dr. Timis' contract was last extended in twenty twenty one, effective through June thirty of twenty twenty six. Is the end of the contract agreement, it's two years away, the superintendent contracts are traditionally three to five years in length, extended after it effective or higher. Evaluations proposed for the board to extend the agreement through June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven. Attached contract link, which represents changes in state law regarding superintendent compensation and evaluation along with change, um, change in the pace.
I'll move the Board of Education approved an extension of amendments to the contract for Dr. Timis, commencing July first, twenty twenty four, through June thirty of twenty twenty seven.
Or.
Um, all right, it's been moved inside a discussion. So, just want to walk for you.
I guess I would just note that there are constantly super decisions in the state and that many of them are posted for various salaries and I think very lucky that Dr. Timis wants to stay here in.
I. Sir Aubrey. Really?
I.
Vera.
I.
I guess, uh, Mr. London. All right, we'll move on to our discussion items, uh, starting with our new D H M S course proposal.
So we have Bill Evan here, um, Bill has a unique skill set. So he was hired as a fourth grade teacher, you know, elementary certified. He was also six twelve English certified. So he's one of the few teachers that can take twelve. And then he has, through building his own house. Now means the requirements to be construction. Uh, building trade certified, which allows us to offer wood shop courses. Very unique out of the community, because it's so hard to buy students. Unicorns like Bill.
So I asked wood shop, Mr. Tier. Do you know, Mr. Tier, why?
I have no idea.
Just like that.
They, somebody told me it was like early mid nineties when it was finally. So.
It's sorry.
It's probably wrong. Um, so we're in a unique position, and we actually have a, a lot of times when you offer wood shop or building trade, you try to find someone that's a carpier that help. People can feel that you have a teacher to teach. We have a highly trained teacher. Then we'll be certified, we're going to do this. Awesome. Awesome. I mean, it'd be great for our guests to learn about film.
It's like. There's two, or there's three courses.
Yeah. Do you have to explain right here, some of these questions here? Report this.
Uh, so I have a list, you know, we have a list of. I've actually already. Do I contact them their first name? First name is since I can walk. I'm happy to help.
I guess, do you guys want, you want me to go through first, or would you like to start?
Yeah, that's true.
Okay. Uh.
Teach us.
They, sounds good. The, this kind of came to my attention because I, um, through my roles, football coach, I had a lot of. High school athletes, specifically on that day. It came up a few years ago that a couple of kids said, hey, I applied to consortium. And I wasn't able to. Um, because we, it came up that we have, well, we have fourteen slots in building trades consortium, and I may have instantly have.
Did you say?
I'll remember the issue.
So, at that point, like, I was in the process of building my own house. I've spent the last ten years, um, working my dad's general contractor. Summers. At that, so kind of in the tracking hours of the last two years of. Um, but the goal is to kind of address that and, uh, really provide, I know there's, we've got this big push within everything, working on learning opportunities. How can we bring those in? How can we, and we're, and at a middle school level, I've been seeing like a high demand for more and more kids screaming for, what can we make? Um, and so the goal of it, like, my main goal is to address that increasing need of students requesting it. How can we give that hands-on opportunity? And then I want, would love to build a full construction tech program. Uh, which would include the development of, you've got the systems course, which would then build into eventually a C T course. There's a few more requirements that take, that of creating a C T board that we have to go through, um, to do that. But that's, that class would then move into that, with the goal of that systems course to be, to still keep it, so that the first opportunity. That we're not waiting till eleventh grade for students to have to have this opportunity to go do construction education. We can meet them as ninth or tenth graders and start to build that knowledge, hopefully meaning that we can be more efficient as a program in that eleventh, twelfth grade. For those left to twelfth years who are building something more, uh, at a larger scale. Um, and then finally also, like, I thought about this, is they really creating space for students to feel like they belong. There's a lot, there's a sect of students who, I guess it's, I view it as, I would love to see them be able to have that space here on campus as opposed to having to lead to find that space. Uh, so those are kind of general goals of the two. Specifically with the two courses, you have, you've got the systems and construction course, that is the one that is designed to build into a C T course. Um, it would be fifty fifty modules in classroom, so there would be a ton of classroom time where we go through and you're learning like, okay. Here's everything that goes into a foundation. How are we go, what, what are your footing depths? What are your, um, where, how much rebar do you need? What's your span? How often do you need to? Um, how, like, how do you do your corners? What's the breakdown of concrete, um, as you're making new creates, but it's start to module back. And then after we get through that module, okay, we're moving on, we're going into four systems. Now, what's the, what's the branding for us? And then build through the whole process until you get to finish working the house. So that way you can teach things and really slow down and break down, um, some of the really heavy construction math. That if you're trying to teach it while doing it, can really bog down the process, right? Getting kids to understand, give me, most, many carpenters have to review how to do set stringer sets for stairs every time they go and do it. Because it's, there's so many processes they don't. Um, making sure that you're not teaching how to lay out a wall that first time you're laying it out and then after the whole nails, we taught that in module that out before. We can just apply that as we build C T course. And really getting them a good understanding of the residential process of construction, which, as we kind of get into an era of. We're in a national housing crisis where people are going to, like, new homes more frequently are going to be built. Students are even aren't able to come in and just get an understanding of that, so that when they're older, they are, understand the process that they're on. Building their own house would go through would be beneficial. Um, but that system's course really targeted at those kids who are interested in trades, want to go into the trades, kind of build that. If, like, give them that opportunity before the eleventh grade. Uh, the wood shop class being the, another, more of a, like, what can we catch? Who can we grab that maybe doesn't know they're interested in this? Because perhaps it's a student who's on a A P or I B track or on a, um, the middle, early middle college track, but they want. They, we have all the, we have more elective opportunities in block schedule, and so they want to pick something up that's not another academic. Right, that, where they have an opportunity to stay on campus and work with their hands and have that creative outlet. This emphasis on this really being to safety and understanding how to safely operate all the equipment. So that way, they're down the road, they're able to do that in their own lives as well as, uh, if they wanted to pick up a summer job, they're not being taught exactly how to do that in college. Um, and then the hope of this is that, yes, we're building individual projects here as well, like, small, small projects for them to take home. But what is the district, right? Do we need, you know, picnic tables around the district? Is there something else that, um, is there, I know at one point, Dr. Timis talks about, what can we build things to sell in the store that's on, on campus now? How can we merge and work with other, other people, uh, throughout the district, so provide themselves a chance? It's horrible. Right now, a little bit.
Yeah. Generation between the.
Where is, uh, I'm sure that you said, you know. So, the shot.
Yeah.
A, so, but where.
I feel like that.
Where? Spaced, spread out. Spaces.
Greg and I walked, we did all the wiring that you're into our way ups. There are three spaces that are logical. It's gonna take.
Yeah, it's, depending on the way we can do it, I mean, to start, I'm very confident that we can run it well, right? Like, that we could, it might mean that we have to get creative with some of the, where we're operating out of on a rainy day and not in bad weather days, but like. You can, um, it could be, you very easily run pretty well to start it. Like, viewing this, like, down the road, another next slide is like, it's really for your. This is just to, yeah, I mean, sorry. Free for you.
I said, it was very strong. Just heard that they didn't want to go to college.
Yeah.
You know, bad in the trades. Not like we said, they, they follow all sports, all activity, but. Source. For whatever reason. A second question for you.
Yeah, um, mainly this, looking at drafting.
So I, so I.
Yeah, so actually a blue, blueprint, blueprint reading and, um, will be, will be the initial course in the systems class. Is how do we, how do we do a takeoff? How do we read a blueprint? Um, and then there will be a design feature. Uh, I'm kind of looking, I believe there's a, we have a sketchup or like an existing tech somewhere at one of the other. Um, either one of the elementary schools or thereon where they can pull that information to start to draft and bring in building. But a lot of it to start, will, the, the rollout would be more of, how do we read blueprint? How do we read plan? The draft and the design coming as we kind of build, build out there.
We talked about, like, oh, we had thirteen students that tried to get into, uh. Building trades.
We had about fifty who applied and only, um, thirteen or fourteen got seats, but then we had an. We had about fifty who applied and only um thirteen or fourteen got seats, but then we had an additional fourteen asset. We really, really wanted to go to that.
Um, little bit about me kind of because my question would be why is the middle school English teacher? Presenting our construction. Mr. Dr. Tim has answered a little bit of that, but. Uh, I started, I went through a CTE program and it was a very uh fairly successful one. I graduated from Charlotte. Um, and that kind of spurred my my interest. I got to college and IU Bloomington did not have anything like. Indiana that split all your engineering, your your steam stuff is at Purdue, liberal arts, your sciences are at I. Um, so I was kind of in a situation where I didn't have that opportunity as a choice of the major. So that led me to the teaching route. Uh, but I did while there in Bloomington work for Hattie Taffy Man during my. Uh, senior year and then the two years that I was in Indianapolis, I partnered with them. To do builds as a group here. After that, I was working with my dad's business from now until twenty twenty four, and then I built my home in Chelsea. From twenty twenty one until now. Um, broke ground in July twenty two and finally did in August. Um, and currently I'm in the process of acquiring. Why did I build in Chelsea? Because that's where the land was. So.
I assume that people would not sign up for both. Practically pick one or the other. There's a lot of overlap.
Yeah. The hope right now is to target and to to bring that opportunity in at a certain stage, so that they're not waiting till they're. They're June, like the hope would be um, and then as we build out, I would like to be able to run a full CTE program here. So that we can, there's multiple opportunities so that we're not seeing. Given those that. Twenty thirty five kids say, oh, I gotta choose something. That's right. But can we? It seems like there's the demand to be able to have a course in both. Um, depending on where the students kind of wants and desires at that. If there's an opportunity, I would love to explore the opportunity to partner and see what we could do down the road. Um. And kind of go and what does what does that look like? I don't. But um. So pretty successful. They can start earlier, right? Say they're very low to finish. They go, then go like Washnott, take advanced courses or get the next level, whatever I'd say.
We hit that issue now. So across the federal consortium. We have uh Jeff Brittenhouse as the teacher that he posts here. He's a Chelsea employee. They run the morning and the afternoon session. We can only get kids in for one year. So we send them to seniors, Washington. For the way down. Policeman. So we have, and they're still rejecting. Forty seven or thirty five kids out of Dexter.
The hope, yeah. Um, I've had that brief contact or brief interest just because I was able to, we took the students up to um. A trades trade show on Howell that was a couple of these coaches, which were middle schoolers though. I was able to connect with a couple of local juniors. And they were already expressing interest in wanting to talk about the internships that play through that. Um, as we go, as we go forward. So that's like hoping to build those those local partners. It is hard um. Because currently Michigan law doesn't do us a lot of favors insurance wise because you have to be. Most of the just your self-owned businesses, your residential construction businesses have to have an eighteen-year-old on job. You have an eighteen-year-old. Um, there are ways I'm aware of a couple of ways around that, but they're not. It is. It's a special insurance that has to be acquired by the builders themselves, the owner of the business. Um, so kind of hoping what does that? So again, going forward, like what does that look like? Goal is CTE Dexter, creating those local. Partners, but also to build on. It's like how on the program I came through, we would. What would you they would do is they'd auction off a house every year. And so people would bid on that house and their the minimum bid being the cost of materials. And then you kind of bid on that house if you like it and you can then you build it as a module modular. And on credit, and then you're able to offload that and move it to. Um, and you literally walk in, semi comes in, they roll them to a flatbed and move it on. You take the whole thing, you move it and put it on foundation. Um, that has been preset. So that that would give us an opportunity to be all very efficient with it if we can do it on site, on campus. Um, so what does that like kind of what that look? That's like the eventual dream goal, like hyper dream. Could we build it? Is there space to do a neighbor? I don't know. Like hyper dream. But that I think that would be really cool. Affordable housing. There there are districts throughout the country that are starting to to try and. Address the affordable housing issue through this or they're not for school employees as well, like kind of giving giving that opportunity. Um, we have a situation talking with Craig. We have uh the opportunity here. Washnott County allows eight hundred square foot ADUs to be. And low to be built without a without a um building. So could we possibly partner with people who you could bid on alternative dwell or additional dwelling units? So like. The place so bring in, I think the goal from the county was to provide more apartments for people. So and then the other option I know um it's been brought to my attention. This I haven't seen personally like that. People are. Actually building tiny homes. Like kids are building tiny homes on trailers and selling and doing that. So like those are kind of some options. Of dr- possible directions, right? Like you're you're fully extreme one being. Um, yeah, that one's about six hundred and fifty square feet. So.
You know, I have the house students be project widely.
Those are for the first three were actually industrial properties. So that's how we're going to build those first. Once our section. And then. Jordan had one in. And then the the guy that used to have a review. He bought the film. And. And uh. So I'll tell you, it's a mature mature shot your wife is a show.
Right now, because our students don't have that opportunity to do that, all of our second, many of our second year uh building trade students will either work at Hecking Hardware. They'll um get a job where we're based learning experience of a construction company. Or sometimes they'll go into CAD or welding their second year because we do not have a year two. So that's what a lot of our students are doing currently. Well, that's it. Your knowledge base is clear. So you've already done a lot of research. I'll write questions. Thank you. Well, I'm too. My my thought is he's coming up and how. And how much money you can save some of it. I'll have to just do basic. Things. I mean, it's such a difference. So.
For college kid who uses a hard extruder.
I appreciate the discussion and the presentation. It gave me a lot more context for what I was reading and I. While I wasn't unfavorable before, I am feeling more favorable about the prospect. So I guess the last question I have for you is sort of what Dan was talking about. Can you put this in a little more context for me in terms of educationally? Where would a kid be at high school in terms of being able to? Enter a work like what type of workforce? Wouldn't be realistic for our high school kids to enter on condition of like. Let's say playing this out and where you see it going where? Not just like these two.
Goal, yeah, of not just these two.
Yeah, like. Where what's a realistic endpoint? High school wise with no further education or for someone who's interested, what would the next step? I'm just trying to have a plan a couple of ways in the.
So there's a couple of different things which you what the hope would be that you can. Giving them multiple, a few different avenues. Um, it would be appropriate for a kid who is interested in. Uh, a construction management program at in college who wants to then go in and do that. It's appropriate for a student and down the road, there's the option to get in where. We could actually create one of the classes would be. Or it would be a sixty-hour course where they could test into the. We can register to allow them to do that. Um, I don't know the whole process of that yet. It was just brought to my attention recently, but that is an option.
Of the twenty-two students we have currently in this um consortium program that are in the building trades come through um SWWC. Um, out of the twenty-two thirteen have placements with either construction um companies. Uh, or are we already have a job placement for next year post-graduation? With companies either doing some kind of building trades or yeah, happening hardware or some kind of construction related field.
Yeah. Yep. And we do offer opportunities to reach out to system. Construction kids connection or nothing. So. It means a lot of major in engineering.
I was trying to say that I think it doesn't just have to be the direct course into construction. It can also be something that. Um, you know, just it's a different way to work. Kids would explore making things as you said. Uh, I mean, I took wood shop and I didn't go into construction, but I still have all of my wood shop. Yeah.
Bill and I were talking about this when we were putting together course proposals. When we were kids, the technology and the tools were going and stealing our dad's power tools. Right? Like we didn't have Game Boys and gaming. So like we this was the technology, right? We were going and building and doing. We have so many kids generation, they've never once picked up a tool. A hand tool, a power tool. This would be give all students the experience. It's really powerful.
To your point, I think this is how this is also sort of teaching them like skills. Because as you said.
Create helps. It helps create a better appreciation for what it even if you don't go into for what you're hiring. Right? In the process that you know, if you if that is the direction you you go, you go, right? Like you now. If you can understand that process, there's less likely for conflict or confusion between yourself and trades profession.
The kids eyes to the opportunity to the trades. With no little success, and I think that's really trying to turn out.
But I mean, the one of the things that um. There's I actually have it in one of the proposals. The forty-five percent of the trades workforce is over the age. Um, and only with only nine percent of that being under the age of twenty-five. So you're looking at your that means so if nine percent are going to be quick math. You're looking, that's a lo- a large chunk that, okay, by the time our seventh graders are we're another six years into that. Right? By the time they graduate. We're now looking at is the average age forty-nine. So yeah, like what? So. Every professional that I've interacted with the past five to ten years. Really like it was interesting. You saw it when I first started in the mid. Mid two thousand in the mid twenties. You'd have people were very protected, right? And then we then there was the COVID boom and everybody's like, we were going gangbusters. And now you're starting to see guys who are looking around like, how do I? I don't, I I want to phase out of this. But I don't know if anybody wants to come in and take this over or I'm not or unless. Or if I do have somebody who's interested in it. I'm teaching them from scratch, right? They they're not coming in with necessary skills or. Excuse me. They think that they want to go pursue. We're we're seeing a lot more of the kid who. Wants to go in college. And that gets to college and decides this isn't really where I want.
I got a job on both. Remember, because I'm plumbing and stretching. It's we need to fix things on boats all the time. So. Okay, and in my engineering work, classes were a lot of things that. Do not know about. Actually. Making a system, doing electric, you know. Wiring the house or doing any uh real world experience. So it's, I think it's a, there's a broad application here. Um, my dad actually taught shop. So they faced him out, but um I'm a beach and.
Want to order bands. Pretty event, which.
Somebody's doing quite a lot with. All that again, my. At the whole, I mean, I really do hope that as people really sit down with. But not with any any person within the community who's a trades student. What do you want? And you and take that feedback as guidance as we start to. It's really. Yeah, it it will.
No, we start a wood shop and then we go on. Well, the systems.
Yeah, systems. Oh, we're down this. We're down the second one. No, that that dude, I'm just trying. I'm just trying to do it in both at once.
This is a discussion. So yeah, it's just a discussion. Thank you so much for your time this week.
Oh, thank you.
I do want to know what tools you.
The list is extensive right now.
But it's part of the planning process and planning what he's. Um, our packing method describes why the whole of all being the most popular suggestion, like equally memorial walkway. The item is presented where in discussions. I looked at it twice this year ago and it still looks just a bit advanced.
Was it about thirty percent of the kids that answered? Uh, certainly I only asked names, which was two years after Kate that supplied kids. It's a subvariation. And then it was some time.
I know in the executive summary, my name is on recommendation. Both my children have. Not only while they were in the classroom, but beyond. Um, she she was the type of teacher that would reach out to her students as all of our Dexter students or Dexter teachers that were just told was all. This is real, very difficult and she still knows my things. So anyway, but. So um, I just think that it's such a, she had such an impact on our community, you know, not just our students. I love kind of getting this. Something that's so sunshiny and. Well, I just. Okay, move on to our last discussion item, which is the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget states. To review the preliminary budget parameters, CEO Kristen Vicky. Vicky will share with the board. Vicky will chair with board and update. Leading with these organization parameters to be used to prepare twenty twenty four, twenty five budget.
So through here today. Building from the house. Foundation law. Governors. Centers. And then or Senate or House was last to get. So the committee board was talking to the board about the initial parameters of UTEC governors, foundation. Knowing that would be counted as a scheduled service in December, it's that part. So it's on to three billion apartments. This is actually by law, we have the new.
That's okay. Uh no, it's exactly what Chris said, um we have multiple scenarios that we talked through today, um and then since. You, I'm looking for guidance, uh so do we need force of. Force direction. Um to proceed with this scenario or to change it up?
Typically. Or any word or votes on the fact. Students have the foundation grant, so that they have ownership. For that, but. Most years, uh there's an option to either add or cut programs, this year. This is very forward. But this is about as a committee recommendation for the. Uh scenarios of news, book and public hearing, you know. Keep going that the whole thing, the walls go down in the air and uh. The ball. Handle on the details and drive around who I was, yeah. Figure out what a real program. The whole, what we're on for our program.
Yeah, but because I said it. The hour here twenty five, but since. I don't know if we approach the. Compared to conservative or not. So like. See what's coming up. We didn't ask to.
Yeah, that'll mean, you know, the add is that um. The expectation, hopefully, this fear that you don't end up with a free. Greatish. Which means our funding also not being as low as. The objective in the next year will be more of a fifty percent rate. Uh twenty to fifty percent versus what.
That was Sarah's, we don't land. This year's deficit way overstated. And budget picture. Overstated on the end of the bottom line. Uh because we know it's not the positive variables. It really got a kind of. It passed the numbers on paper and really. And that definitely will actually. In our level of competition.
Well, it sounds like you guys make some nice assumptions. Foundation levels change, holding enrollment class.
So. It's because I mean, I think, see others just they don't have been conservative.
And I'm assuming. She gave us some. Two seventeen and a. It's only a little bit, what, five percent?
About. Twenty five dollars difference on foundation grants, just under ninety thousand dollars. And twenty five students is in the neighborhood of. All of other things. Thoughts around that figure.
We all know.
Which.
After.
The angle.
But we're really looking for out tonight. Ask a question, any discussion. And ultimately, if Chris, he uh. Comes up. Census of how to proceed with the document that we will have. Things will change, it was solved. Now on that, project with the board. For the life of all, quite that ownership of those two. Solvers.
Like you guys have talked through it. Very well, and it's like.
Obviously. We have our second opportunity for public participation. No one would run the room. We'll have our own something, we'll look on to board. Say I was having. And Mara was the big winner of the rain. Rattle, she bought, she got some big children. The best part was, uh the science teachers tell you, you have to go out and. Yes, yes.
I was there. It was interesting, you know, how the uh looking at through the phone was much more different. Than what you saw.
Which is obviously the little ones. Yeah, they push you, put it, catch it on, just I wish you'd see it better. And that part. True. Um there was a, I believe it is the legislative breakfast this morning. Um everyone. Uh that made it was there. And there were various staff room. Um it was actually a really. Big discussion of the budget and they were really looking for feedback um. Words and super tendents and um. Very lucky to, this is always on top of everything and. Loves what we need. Um. I forgot my agenda, so they did cover topics like the. Bats available, um the dyslexia available. A lot of just financial discussion about vinsors and what is impactful and not impactful for our experience, we'll critique. How money gets to us, whether it's general fund money, whether it's local money. Um there's a lot of. Good discussion and. Probably agree with people on some things, and we're really interested in. It's on others and other guys are like, yeah, this is what we think, so. But yeah.
I probably more seen that we did for staff and extra graduate. Value of professional location, staffing. Whatever teacher, student, my teacher. When I got nicked out at VA. By the nurse there. She saw my shirt, she was like, what, what, she called up. Sent her case back. Like with Chelsea, the private, the public. Intercom, she basically shot off all the teachers in the state. All the activities, those, they all pop. It's a small. Trying to do private school. So I think that that way might be kind of most part of it. Seven three. I guess I would appreciate that. Good thing to say. School. Running toward. All that can be.
Uh we have information items in our packets and. Hi. Albert. We're really.
Hi.
Ritter, I'm.
Stay here.